All right. Good evening, East Hampton ZBA. We're live on Channel 22. We're streaming to YouTube. Phone lines are open. This meeting is being recorded. You may begin.
Thank you, Matt. Welcome, everybody, to the Town of East Hampton's zoning Board of Appeals, meeting for August 12, 2025. We have some scheduled public hearings. I'll read the first one into the record. The applicant is Sophia Boroditsky at 85 Oyster Shores Road in East Hampton, Suffolk map number 300-92-2-43. The size and location is 146,788, 84 square feet at 85 Oyster Shores Road in East Hampton. The description is to construct a pool with associated deck and patio and a deck associated with the principal building with inside yard setbacks. The relief sought is that variances of 24.4 feet, 17.6 feet, 15.6 feet, and 6.6 feet from 2551110 of the town code are needed to construct the pool deck 25.6 feet, pool 32.4 feet, and pool patio 34.2 feet from the side yard property line where 50 feet is required, and to construct the deck associated with the principal building 28.4 feet from the side yard property line where 35 feet is required, and any other relief necessary. Zoning District A3 Residence X Flood Zone VE8 in the Secret Class Type 2. This is a hearing that was already conducted. There was a problem with notice or posting. It was the mailing, actually, Charlie. And just want to... So we're going to open the record. Do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Yeah, I reviewed the notice of service and the affidavit, and everything seems to be in order now. So we're good. If anybody's here that wants to talk, they can.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this application? Matt, is there anybody online?
We have no callers on the line.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and the record for Sophia Boroditsky at 85 Oyster Shores Road in East Hampton, Suffolk map number 300-92-2-43.
Second.
Concur. Thank you. Next application, we have Ivan Jacome at 78 Hildreth Place in Springs, Suffolk map number 300-96-5-1.6. Size and location is 15,151.5 square feet at 78 Hildreth Place Estates of Montauk, lots 9 through 15, block 55, filed January 29, 1913, as map number 48 in Springs. The description is to allow an existing 500-square-foot pool to remain within the minimum front yard and rear yard setbacks. Two variances of 12.9 feet and 4.8 feet pursuant to 2551110 of the East Hampton Town Code is needed to allow the pool to remain 17.1 feet and 15.2 feet from the front and side yard lot lines where 30 feet and 20 feet are required. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Yeah, I have the affidavit of service and posting, but the applicant didn't fill in the dates on the form. So the posting or the mailing seemed to be postmarked okay, but I just probably should fill this out properly if he's here.
So we're good?
Well, if the applicant's here, he could just... Yeah, so just clarify what day he posted on. He just needs to complete the form, and then we'll be good.
Okay.
That's good. Yeah, we're all good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask Member Thorson to give the presentation.
Hey, Brian. This first photo is taken from 78 Hildreth Place, directly in front of the house. The post, the notice, the public notice, was not out on the curb, but it's up on the house itself. Next, please, Brian.
That's not proper posting.
A little bit out of order here. Let's go to the next one, please. This is the pool that's in question. The application is for a side yard setback, and this is the northeast corner of the pool. Just to the right of the fence is a place where a public road might be built, and directly behind the pool north is, I believe it's an easement where there's a path. I don't know if that's owned by the town or not. Next. Here's standing in the corner looking at the house. That's the pool. Next, please. There's the notice that's on the house and not out at the curb. Next. And that's once you enter the gate that's on the right of the house. This is the path that looks directly north at the pool. I think that might be it.
Do we have the applicant here? You're the applicant?
Yes.
Come on up. Over there. To the dais. Not the dais. Just announce your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Ivan Jacome, and here is 78 Hildreth Place.
Okay, Ivan, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. You can put your hand down.
Okay, yeah, we tried in the beginning, you know, to get a permit first, and then we did the draw with the guy who built the pool, because I wasn't the guy. It was the company who built the pool, but he gave me the measurements and everything. But somehow we got messed up with the town. I don't know what happened, but we tried from the beginning. I tried to do the right thing, you know. I came to the town, of course, I asked them to permission and everything. Something went wrong, and I don't know. When I went to get the final permit, I find out it wasn't right, the measurements, and you know. But we tried to do from the beginning the right thing, but I don't know what happened. Somehow we got messed up, so I don't know. That's it. But I never tried to do something wrong, you know what I mean? I always tried to do the right thing.
Mr. Chairman, I could probably fill in some of the application.
Sure. Would you...
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, would you guys...
Then we can ask, come back to questions.
Frank, come on up.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Brian, can you move the podium over a little?
Isn't it better to look at the post than me?
With you, yes, but I'd like to see. Thank you.
Brian, do you swear affirm to the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Frank, on behalf of the Planning Department, I'm pinch hitting tonight for Morgan Slater, the analyst, to review the application. And the history here is pretty linear. In April 2023, there was a building permit issued for the swimming pool. That building permit was issued in error. It was issued for the swimming pool being located within the northern rear yard setback and the eastern front yard, and I'll use air quotes for "front yard" in the moment, setbacks. The town code requires front yard setbacks from all streets, whether they are open or not. The property to the east is, the survey shown, as the unopened road of St. James Court. This property is in the old filed map system where it is not uncommon for roads to be abandoned in their entirety when they are not necessary to serve the original layout of the subdivision, which had a much higher density in these UR maps than what is actually built out. So there are roads in the map that are slated for improvement and those that are slated for abandonment. I do have a copy of the most recent UR map now here, and they show that area as a park. They don't show that as a road anymore. So it's possible that the application is overnoticed a little bit. That's more of a building department determination. But St. James Court may not be a front yard anymore. It may be a side yard, and then therefore it would need lesser variance. So the swimming pool was... These are the as-built conditions. I do have the survey that I could show you that was issued with the building permit. It showed the swimming pool about 18 feet from St. James Court, and I think the same distance of 15.2 feet or about that to the property line to the north. I also have... I say "I." I'm taking a lot of the credit for Morgan's work. Morgan had prepared for the board a couple of aerial photographs that show that area around it as parkland and the property to the north as parkland. So these dimensional setbacks are there to protect the adjoining properties and their enjoyment of the property, and it's unclear if there's any impacts to those neighbors. That's for the board to determine, obviously. But it does appear that the building permit was issued in error, and those are among the circumstances for which variances were created in the first place, those types of not necessarily self-created difficulties. So I saw some nods when I offered to put up the other survey. Are there any questions that I could answer now, or should I show you some of the other information in the file?
So even if the eastern property line was considered a side yard, it's still within...
It would still need a variance. It wouldn't comply with those side yards.
In both dimensions, the north and the east.
It would need 20 feet, right?
I mean, this is a building department error. You can't answer for the building department, but we've seen this a couple of times. I'm sure that members have been here longer than I have.
The permit was issued in 2023. Our building department handles an extraordinary volume of applications for everything. And yeah, this permit appears to have been issued in error.
But the pool and the... You said the survey that accompanied the building permit showed it at 15.2 feet from the northern property line, which is what it is now.
It may have been 15.1. I'll show you in a second. It's very close, yes.
Very close, yes. And in the other direction, over to St. James Court, the building was issued at about 18 feet, and that's 17.1.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that one was 30 until maybe not now.
Maybe it's 20.
Now it's 20. Okay.
What's odd here is that for years, the building department has required that the pool setbacks be staked prior to getting a permit. And I don't know what happened here, but...
There was, if you take a look at the building history, and I know Morgan included it in the application history, the survey that went with the building permit did have it staked out. So the pool was basically, for the most part, built where it was proposed with a slight error, and its location within setbacks was not identified by the building department at the time the permit was issued. Under 99% of the circumstances, in my opinion, they would have caught that and bounced it back to the applicant, and said, "You got to put it in another location." In terms of the presence of St. James Court, it's possible that, you know, another applicant may have dug in a little bit to see if that's still a road, and maybe it would have been depicted differently or sought a determination from the building inspector if the front yard setback still applied.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just following up on that, the size of the pool. So the building permit was issued for an 800-square-foot pool, but it was... The plans associated the permit had a 416-square-foot pool, but the pool, according to the TAM, is 500 square feet. So am I correct that the pool itself is, I'm not trying to be... But like somewhat overbuilt relative to the plan? I'm not talking about the setback, which could have, I mean, if it was built larger than the plans showed, I don't know how to...
It doesn't look like... I'll show you.
That's typically acceptable.
I'm asking Brian the question. Sorry, sir.
I'll show you the survey. The swimming pool looks, I'm going to say comparable, not identical. I didn't measure it, but it does look comparable to the building permit that was issued for the swimming pool.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking is because if the pool were built at a different size than in the plans, you know, maybe that's part of why it shift, you know, it got closer to the setbacks, and it should have. I'm not sure. Obviously, I'm just trying to figure out how much was building department error and then other things that happened, so.
My suggestion respectfully is compare the two surveys.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Would you like to see that now?
Yes, please.
Oh, excuse me. This is the as-built survey. This is the survey... I had the as-built survey up. This is the survey, yeah, issued... Excuse me, sorry about that. This is the proposed swimming pool survey. It shows an 18-foot setback to St. James and a 15.1-foot setback to the north at 16 by 26. The as-built survey doesn't have the dimensions on it, but it's naked eyeing it. They don't look significantly different.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just because Morgan included it in the file, she did have a couple of aerials that may be of interest to the board, and we usually do show the aerials for the board's information. This is the overall neighborhood. This is the subject property. This is town-owned open space to the north. This is the unopened St. James Road, and then more zoomed-in view of the property. And as I said, I have the UR map here, and I think you have it in your file as well. But I think that's the application in a nutshell.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian. Does anybody in the public would like to address this application? Matt, is there anybody online?
We have no callers on the line.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Yep, regarding the application of Ivan Jacome, 78 Hildreth Place, Springs, New York, 11937, Suffolk County Tax Map, 300-96-5-1.6. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record.
I'll second it.
I concur.
Concur.
I concur. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jacome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeffrey Minich at 93 Durrie Avenue in Montauk, Suffolk map number 300-5-2-15. The size and location is 11,250 square feet at 93 Durrie Avenue, Soundview Estates, Lot 9, map number 1929 in Montauk. The description is to allow an existing patio to remain 13 feet from the side yard property line where 20 feet is required. The relief sought is one variance of 7 feet from 2551110 of the East Hampton Town Code is required to allow the existing patio to remain 13 feet from the side yard lot line where 20-foot setback is required, and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is B Residence, Zone X Flood Zone, and the Secret Class is Type 2. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
I reviewed the affidavit of service and posting. The service was done correctly, but based on the affidavit, it says this was only posted yesterday. So, yeah, so we didn't get proper posting. We could do similar to what we did on the other one, where we could do the hearing today and keep it open until the next. We have a... It probably won't be for a little while. Keep it open for another meeting to have proper posting. It's up to the board.
You're the applicant? You're the agent or applicant?
I'm the agent.
Come on up.
Well, are we opening the hearing or...?
Well, I think...
It was not posted until today, and I do feel that posting is a very important part of a public hearing and would like to see the hearing happen at another time when there's a full 10-day posting. I don't know how my fellow board members feel.
Well, I agree. I think it calls for proper posting, so it was just posted yesterday.
Yes, sir. Yesterday morning.
I was here Friday, and there was no posting.
Are we saying if we extend it, then there's an opportunity for people to come in and speak? So we all close it today? If we do it?
I know, but you know, this keeps happening. You keep doing it. As long as we continue to do this and say, and have it up for another week.
I think we should have 10 days of posting before we hold a public hearing.
Yeah, we can, I mean, if we could adjourn the closing, adjourn the hearing until, you know, proper posting, the 10 days, or we can have the hearing and keep it open for them to have it properly posted, and then at a meeting at another day, we can keep it, we can have the hearing continued. And if any neighbors have any comments or complaints, they can attend that future hearing, whatever we decide, whatever our schedule allows. It'll probably be in two weeks, if that's available. Probably at this point, it'll be September, September 16.
I mean, I'm in favor of holding it now. We have a busy schedule. We have a busy schedule every week. It's incumbent on them to post it. You're going to have to post it if we continue the hearing, and it's going to have to stay open. But there are guidelines to how these processes are supposed to happen. Board members? Well, I'm certainly with the board members who are concerned about it. This is a public hearing, and the public has to be notified, so the sign has to be up. So if we go ahead with the hearing today, and the feeling is that the public will have an opportunity to speak, but I'm never in favor of moving forward with these hearings if the public isn't properly represented. So if we go ahead with the hearing today, I can live with it, but I have to know that, you know, as you say, we'll stay open, and we will give an opportunity for the nine neighbors who might have a concern. This is what this is about. This is about letting the public know that there's going to be work done on your property. You have to post it, so.
The way I feel about it is we keep doing this over and over, and we really need to stick to what it should be to begin with. And all those instructions get sent out to the applicants or the agents. When are we going to start it here?
So we can vote. I mean, I was, I will not, I don't want to move forward today. I think it should be posted, and we come back in the next meeting. We have a busy schedule every week, correct? But, I mean...
Well, I'm willing to move forward with it. We know that there's going to be open after this, but I understand the complaint. I agree that this is really important, and it's been treated cavalieri by some people, and I think we have to be careful with it.
And I'm not making any comments about this application at all, and this is about upholding the integrity of posting, so, right? So not at all personal or individual to this application, the content of it.
Okay with having the hearing now, and as long as we get the proper posting, just like we did at 85 Oyster Shores.
Same, so the next, because we wouldn't be able, it wouldn't have enough time to do. Okay.
16th is when we would have the continuation if we do it?
Or either both.
Who are we scheduling? 16th, September. Oh, September.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. I'll be here.
Move ahead. Well, we'll have the presentation. Okay, I'm going to do a little field report first, and then you'll come up. These are slightly out of order, but I only have about six or eight photos, so it won't matter. I'm looking west here on Durrie. This is down on Colloden Shores. I'm looking west. Character neighborhood. Turn the other way. Next, please. Here I am, looking east, and this is heading back up to Flamingo. Next. Here is the posting that went up yesterday. This is one I was down there yesterday about noon, maybe a little later. There's the posting on a tree that's up. Another thing about this, it's supposed to be posted at the road. You're going to post the next time, put it out at the road, because people coming by have to have an opportunity to see the sign, okay? Next. This is the house immediately across the way. Most affected neighbors by anything going on immediately across the way. Next. This is the house that's immediately to the, I guess that's the west of it. Next. Now, I'm coming down here. The property line in question has got the stockade fence on it, and if you look, we're going to get another photo of it. But you see a post, and you see a corner of a patio that's extended beyond the house. That's the point we're discussing. Next. Here again, I'm looking down at that point as it goes to the backyard. I'm looking at that patio. Next. That little corner. Again, I've turned my way. There's their pool and a shed beyond. But again, this is the area that's in contention. Next. Now I've gone to the backyard, and I'm looking again. Now the fence is on my left. You can see that patio section that's coming out from the house with a little bit of a canopy over it. Next. That's it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Can you announce your name?
Devin Zaccardi with the Laurel Group, here for Jeffrey Minich, 93 Durrie Ave. Requesting...
Hold on.
Speak close to the mic, please. Thank you.
Requesting a variance.
You're an attorney. Are you an attorney?
I'm not.
Okay. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I'm here going for a variance in this green highlighted section. The reason being, there is one door for entrance and exit off the back. It is right here, which is inside that line. So given the pool patio setbacks, if we were to go to 20 feet, that would actually interfere with the middle of the door, which brings us here.
When was this constructed?
Last year.
So at that time, was it a problem to understand how this was going to work for you? I mean, are you the planner? Are you the architect?
We are a landscape architecture firm. I'm not an architect, but landscape architect myself. We were given this project from a property management company that kind of left these homeowners in the dust. So they did, they installed the pool. They tore everything up, and then they came to us to install the patio portion. What I was provided was a survey with the proposed patio space and everything, of which was connected to the pool. And with what I did, the only amendment I made was taking it back ever so slightly to not be attached to the pool. Do you happen to have the survey from 2022?
I think that's the building permit survey. Is this the one from 2022?
This one right here. This one right here, correct. So this was all attached, this is what I think. So this was existing concrete that was here already, our house. And all we did was extend this further to what was already submitted. This was all proposed concrete. All I did was take this back ever so slightly to the pool. And I extended this over a little bit, just to provide a little bit of space. If we were to cut this back significantly, okay, this would be basically four or five blockway at this point.
Right, but when we're designing, we have codes, we design within codes, so, you know.
Just built without a permit?
Was there a building permit for this?
There's a building permit for the decking. There's a building permit for pools, decking, spa. And then it'd be similar.
For the what? I'm sorry? That's the area that we're talking about? That's the pergola over the concrete?
That's the roof over the concrete we're talking about? Okay.
So for the, okay. It was for the pergola, but not for the surface on the ground, not for the patio?
Not for the extension.
Great, okay, thank you.
Was there a design option that would have made this, you have it all, it's all connected now, one patio, right? To the pool, so it's a pool patio?
It is not connected. It's off about, you have the stepping stones that are in between.
It looks connected.
These are separating.
By about three feet?
Correct.
Yeah.
So like, basically the patio is replace the concrete, or it's on top of the concrete? On top of the concrete?
Yeah, we kept that concrete in place.
Does it exceed the dimensions of the concrete that was there?
I'm sorry, are you referring to the stepping stones?
No, the, the concrete off of the bedroom with the.
The pergola.
Yep.
Absolutely passed that place, so that was about halfway.
Which, which direction?
Towards where?
Okay.
East, basically.
West. So that would be west, yes. Well, this, the concrete patio, the existing concrete patio is always within 13 feet of.
So extending it towards a pool, you're not, you're not exacerbating the variance request. In other words, variance is to the north and not to the.
So was that, that was pre-existing then? The concrete was, was there before the building permit was issued? Correct.
So the chairman appears to say.
Yes, yes.
Maybe we can hear from.
Was that concrete put in with a permit?
Maybe we can hear from the planning board, you guys. Any other questions?
I'll wait for the planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may come back up, so.
I'm sorry?
Don't leave. You may come back up.
Okay.
Do not leave the building.
Sarah's debut. How are you, Sarah?
Hi, Sarah.
Good evening, board. Sarah Lewis for the planning department.
Sarah, do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you. Just some property history. The original certificate of occupancy for this property was issued in 1961 for a 902-square-foot, one-story residence in Carport. The most recent CO was issued in 2022 for a small first-floor addition, first floor, interior alterations, new windows and doors, and an iasepic system. As mentioned, in April of 2023, a building permit was issued for the construction of a swimming pool, spa, and deck. A building permit for the construction of a pergola over the patio was also issued in 2023. As mentioned, part of the patio was existing concrete, which was confirmed in a survey dated December 29, 1975. So just some history there. The applicant is looking to legalize the existing stone patio, which is 13 feet from the lot line, requiring a seven-foot variance. The required setback in this case is 20 feet due to the double setback requirement of pools and pool decks as accessory structures. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the concrete that appeared from far back is 1975?
Yes.
Is under this new surface that's under the pergola?
Yes.
Half of it?
Yes.
Yeah, so the distance that it sat before, before they did this recent work from the property line, which we assume is pre-existing and therefore has been C of O'd before?
Yeah, so it's the same variance extending north, but as, as mentioned, they've extended it further west. So it's the same variance.
Play that again. It's the same variance to the north?
Going this way, the existing concrete went as far this way, but they've extended it west.
Okay, so the, so the problem is the extension to the west, which is now.
Well, they're looking to legalize the stone patio.
It was like half pre-existing non-conforming?
Exactly.
Sort of doubled the non-conformity?
They were pre-existing non-conforming, because it wasn't permitted. Was it permitted?
I'm not sure if it was permitted.
I mean, to be, to have pre-existing non-conforming status, it has to have been lawfully, right, created, I think?
I guess, I don't get why moving, extending it out to the north made a difference in this. Okay, which, was north to the, which line?
North is up.
North is up, okay. So it did, okay, it did.
But, but why don't we get clear is that you're saying that it wasn't extended to the north, it was extended to the west, and thereby going to the west put that portion that came to the west at variance. Is that right?
Yeah, please, Charlie.
We're talking about this.
Yeah.
This is already here.
Yeah.
They expanded it to here roughly.
Right.
So because it's attached to this patio, which is attached to the pool, it has to meet double setback, which is 20 feet. We are in 13 feet, so I would say this had, you know, I think it was on properties of literally kind of this.
It's a little square and a little rectangle in the corner there.
Kind of the, that's how, that's how I see it, not the step one.
No, that helps so much, Charlie. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we need questions from the applicant?
I don't have any other questions from him. I just meant in case he wanted to respond to any of this. He's in the building. You don't have to. Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion?
Public?
Oh, public, my bad.
Anybody in the public would like to address this application? Anybody online, Matt?
We have no callers online.
Thank you. Okay, let's have a motion. Okay, just got to find it now. Oh, here it is. Thanks. Yesterday's. And then in the application of Jeffrey Minich of 93 Durye Avenue, Montauk, Suffolkianic Tax Map 300-5-2-15, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and the public.
Nope.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Leave the hearing and the.
I'd like to make a motion to leave the hearing open until September 16th for a continuation for, for the purpose of allowing the public to respond to the proper notification on the site. It will need to be reposted, so make sure you follow those guidelines properly, please. Thank you. Sorry.
No, it's a new posting. It's a new posting. It's going to have the new date on it, and it's got to be 10 days prior.
And how many feet from the road, Charlie? Just so we can, like 10 feet from the road? Yeah. And we're leaving the record and the hearing, the hearing and the record open. Okay, that was the motion. Great. Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Concur. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Richard Perrello at 11th Flag Avenue in Montauk, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-30-4-3. Size and location is 14,640 square feet at 11th Flag Avenue in Montauk. The description is to allow an existing residence and associated structures to remain over the maximum allowable building coverage. One variance of 428 square feet is required from 255 1110 of the town code to allow the parcel to remain with the maximum. Lot coverage of 3,356 square feet, where 2,928 square feet is the maximum allowable and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is B Residence, AE Flood Zone, elevation 11, and the secret class is Type 2. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Yes, I reviewed the affidavits of notice and posting, and everything appears to be in order, and the board has jurisdiction over this matter.
Thank you. Lou's report?
This is mine. Okay, this is just a shot basically from around the intersection of Flag and Benson. A shot down Flag Avenue itself. See, can't see a lot of houses, but basically character of the neighborhood. Next. This was the posting. It was on a gate, not right out by the road, but was visible when you went by. Got a little blurry, but it is the correct date and time. Next. This is the house directly across the street from the applicant's house. Next. This is the parking area and shows, I was trying to capture the retaining wall too, which is also, you know, not in scope for the actual overage, but just the, there was some leeway, I guess, for the retaining wall to extend into the town right away that was permitted by the highway department. Next. This is another shot. I was trying to get one of the overhangs. There are a lot of overhangs and roofed overhangs on this house. One of the ones that is shown in a diagram that was sent in by the applicant. You can see it in a distance, and I'll get a closer shot. Next. This is that same overhang, roofed overhang, went up and standing at the Flag Avenue side of that, you know. Next. And I turn to the north, and this is another of the roofed overhangs that has come into play for the, this application. Next, I'm going to walk around the house. Next. This is actually the rear of the pre-existing non-conforming structure that was there. I was trying to get a feel for the grating on this. There are a lot of retaining walls around this property entirely, and you can't see it in the property line here because it's dark, but there's a considerable drop-off to the rear yard of the house on adjoining street. Next. This is another retaining wall that goes down a couple of feet, and then from there on the other side of the shrubbery is yet another retaining wall that goes down to the ground level. Next. This is another roofed overhang that I believe was in question with the building permit that had been issued. Next. Another view of that around the other side of the house. Next. Is just a view that captures the house across the street. I mean, I think that's it. Is that it? Oh, and just another shot of the pre-existing structure that had been redone as part of some of the applications. That's it.
Thank you. You want to announce yourself?
Richard Perrello, owner of the house and a builder.
Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So as far as the lot coverage, can you go, there is a site plan? It has an A, B, and a C. Actually, I'm the, if you go to the proposed survey first, I'm sorry. So on the proposed survey, the actual lot coverage on this survey did not include the roof overhang on that one large porch, which I did not realize. And that's sort of where the crux of the, of the mistake happened. And once the, I thought I actually had an extra few hundred feet of lot coverage, because I was unaware that the surveyor didn't realize that there was an overhang on that, on that, that whole side of the house. So he did not include that on the proposed survey as part of the lot coverage. So that's where the mistake happened, and that is how it actually got exacerbated when I added the other two roof overhangs on the entry and where the, the grilling area was in the back. And that's how I got to the, the 428 feet, because I was unaware that that wasn't included on the original lot coverage on the proposed survey. So it wasn't until after the house was completed and the final survey was done that then I realized that we were over on our, on our lot coverage. So if you can go to the, what has an A, B, and a C? So that, that area labeled A was, that's that roof overhang that you took pictures of, that wasn't included on the original lot coverage that I was unaware of. And then that is where that mistake led to adding B and C, that I didn't realize that I was already at my max. So if we didn't add B or C, I would have been, I believe, those add up to more than 428 square feet, those additional roof structures, I would have been under. But I wasn't aware of this until after the final survey was done, and then you had all of those roof coverages allotted for, and then we were over the 428 feet.
So you're saying B, sorry, B and C, you're saying add up to more than what you're over? Did you say?
Correct. So on the original proposed survey, I was unaware that the surveyor did not include the roof overhang. He was only including the footprint.
Right, I understand.
And that's where the, that's where the mistake really happened, and it just got compounded by adding the other two roof overhangs, because I thought I was still under my total allowable coverage.
Do you have a building permit for the structure we see when we go out and visit the site?
Yes.
According to the plans that were submitted with the building permit?
Yes, it was. The actual structure, all of that was the same, but just the surveyor didn't include it, didn't look at the overhang when he was doing his calculations.
So the main thing is you're saying that, that the survey, what I'm concerned about, this survey didn't reflect correctly what the coverage was. But this is the, the house you built is what you submitted with your building permit. Those plans are the same, is what we're looking at.
Yes.
Do A plus B plus C equal the 428 square feet?
No, I think, I think actually B and C are probably, if we did just A and not, I didn't add B and C, I probably would have been very close.
Right, but right now you're 428 square feet over.
Yeah, that's including everything.
That's A plus B plus C.
And, and the entire, yes, that's everything that's on the property, because it's lot coverage.
Yeah.
428 over with the.
Which includes any roof overhangs.
But with, okay, what's the date on the, you mentioned a survey, the survey that's incorrect, what's the date on that survey?
Is it this proposed one?
That would have been when we did the original, that was probably like 2020.
Oh, sorry. But it just shows proposed, doesn't show it over here. It shows it over here.
Can you zoom in on, is that the proposed?
This is the proposed one. It's 10/6/2020.
So that, and that shows only that one large overhang, the one that you had called A?
Well, this, he, I didn't really, he doesn't have any of the overhangs on that, on that original calculation.
So what about hardscape? Did that increase at all as a result from the building permit application?
Well, we made a little, originally there were steps that we were doing that we didn't end doing, but in terms of the actual hardscape, it's pretty much the same as what's on, what's on the proposed survey.
So certainly those steps contributed to additional lot coverage.
Well, we actually made it a little smaller, so on the patio.
But you're over on building coverage, but not total coverage?
Correct.
Correct, okay, so the. Can I ask a question also? There's another overhang on the house on the second, so I'm looking at your rendering here. So that second floor deck is, has a roof cover?
That's included in that, in that calculation from the survey.
Right, but that was, you're saying that was captured?
On the original plan.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to ask.
Was it the same builder who? Was it the same builder who built the overhangs, who constructed the house?
Um, builder. So I got no one to blame but myself.
Any other questions?
Um, what? Because it would count to building coverage, I can't remember, so forgive me. The accessory structure is the same size as it was prior to the redevelopment of the rest of the property?
Yes.
Same size, so that was an expanded, right? Okay.
The little bit of a gray area is on the overhangs, if it's less than two feet, they don't count it. If it's more than two feet, it does get counted. So that's also where a little bit of a gray area happens, but that calculation was, was done including all of the roof overhangs. Even on the, on the accessory structure, there's a roof overhang on the back that is more than two feet that's included in that calculation.
Any other questions? Thank you. Tyler?
Tyler Borzak for the Planning Department.
Do you swear firm to tell truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, I mean, there's not much else to add. That was a pretty good summary of what happened on the property. There was a 2020 stop work order that was issued for the demolition of the existing residence. Subsequently, a building permit was issued for the demolition and a new, and a new residence. The survey associated with that has a lot coverage of 18.7%, where 20% is allowed. And the as-built lot coverage currently is 22.9%, which ends up being 3,356 square feet, as was in the notice. That lot coverage appears to be attributed to the three additional roof coverings, which are not shown on the survey. And the variance request is 426 square feet to remain at 3,356 where 2928 is allowed. Other than that, I can make myself available for questions if you have. I can pull up the building permit if you want to see that. I do have that available. Other than that, it's a fairly straightforward application.
Can I ask one just for clarity's sake? I feel like we're throwing around terms here that are, I want to make sure everybody's on the same page. This variance is for building coverage, that's roofed area.
That's right.
The TAM says lot coverage, which is.
Lot coverage is what is, what it's called in the town code. There's lot coverage and total lot coverage. Lot coverage is building coverage, as you would also call it. Total lot coverage is everything, that's patios, deckings.
For the total lot, it's okay.
Yeah, I was, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Building coverage is anything that's roofed, correct?
Yeah.
Right, whether it's external or internal. Oh, these are the stamped plans?
These are the plans that were associated with the building permit. This is that survey, it's the same survey. There's just multiple copies of it, sanitary plans. I don't think there's anything else of note in there. And then the building plans themselves. Site plan. Basement plan, which doesn't have much bearing. That's the first story plan. Again, not much bearing on the application. And the second story, which has that roof, which does appear to extend slightly over that deck. That line would be the exterior wall of the first story below it. But again, those ones, as was mentioned, those additional first story ones are not, are not on here.
Can I ask a question? I just want to make sure that this is all noticed properly. So I'm getting a little confused by the, the accessory structure because I see the building permit in 2017 that was to build the 289 square foot accessory building, blah, blah. But was that, and then I've heard it referred to tonight as non-conforming, but I don't, was there another structure there that this 2017 building permit replaced and remained non-conforming? Or was it built non-conforming and not recognized as such in 2017? I just want to see, does that need to be legalized in some way if it wasn't already?
I don't believe, I believe the structure as it is there is legal. I didn't write the assessment on this, I'm just covering it.
So it looks like it's 11.1 feet from the rear.
10 feet would be the rear.
Right, 10 feet is all you need in B, in B zone. Right, okay. So then I was confused why it was referred to, I thought I heard non-conforming.
You, if you flip the page, if you look at the existing conditions, site conditions, it looks like that, it looks like that was there.
In the TAM, it says it was a pre-existing non-conforming accessory building that encroaches side setback.
Right. But it's a rear setback. Isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it would be rear.
It might have been a confusion that they thought it needed a principal setback or something along those lines is my guess. But if it means, if it needs a 10-foot rear yard setback.
Right, so what I'm saying is it's not a non-conforming structure.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Because otherwise this would be the time to try and legalize it.
Sure, yeah.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
No?
No.
Tyler, anything else?
No, that's all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the public would like to address this application? Matt, is there anybody online?
We have no callers online.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Uh, yeah. The application of Richard Perrello at 11th Flag Avenue in Montauk, map 300-030-043. Make motion to close public hearing and the public record.
Second. Concur.
Concur.
Concur, thank you. Our next application is Susan Karasik at 67 Devon Road in Amagansett, Suffolk, Tassentown, number 300-174-611. The size and location is 6,000 square feet at 67 Devon Road in Beach Hampton, Section 1, Block 7, lots 72 to 74, map number 1203 in Amagansett. The description is to legalize and reconstruct an existing deck and allow an existing bin to remain on a parcel of land containing beach vegetation, dune land, within beach jurisdiction of wetlands, within rear and yard, side yard lot line setbacks, and outside of the town's pyramid regulations. The relief is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255 420 of the East Hampton Town, and three variances are required for this application. One variance of five feet is required from 255 1110 of the town code to allow the existing decking to remain 10 feet from the eastern rear yard lot line where 15-foot setback is required. One variance from 255 1110 of the town code is required to allow the existing bin to remain 0.5 feet from the northern side yard lot line where 9.6 feet setback is required. One variance of approximately 5 feet from 255 1172D is required to allow the existing bin to remain 5 foot outside of the town's pyramid regulations. The zoning district is B Residence AE Flood Zone, elevation 13, and the secret class is type two. Council, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Yeah, I reviewed the affidavits and notice and posting and everything seems to be in order and the board has jurisdiction over this hearing.
Yes, thank you. So we're on Devon Road, which is part of the dirt roads that this board knows well on the eastern half, roughly half of this part of Beach Hampton. That's the proper posting that was very close to the road and visible for all to see. Next slide. This is, I'm standing, I didn't, I didn't take street photos just to keep the number of photos down. I think the board is all aware of what this road looks like. It's narrow, there's a lot of gravel coming off, so it makes the road look a little bigger on both sides. But anyway, this is the front of the applicant's home. It's a small beach cottage on a very small lot. We know that many of the lots in Beach Hampton are undersized. This is one of the smaller ones at 6,000 feet. Next slide. Okay, I'm just going, I'm on the south side, I'm going up the south side towards the lot line. You can see the fence there, which probably marks the lot line. This is one part of the decking. It's being used as decking. It's also the walkway basically around the house. I'm heading towards the back. Next slide. And now I'm on the, this is the back decking in question in the rear yard. This is just a part of it. You can just about see the rear facade of the house in this photo and how far back it goes towards the, towards the rear lot line. Next slide. Just the other, other part of the deck. Next slide. That's the rear deck. And then, actually can't see, well, I think I took the shot of kind of what's off the deck on the rear towards the rear lot line. So that's not decked part of the rear yard. Next. Next slide. And then I just turned my back from, I'm standing off the deck looking at the rear facade of the house. You can see the depth of the deck and how it's being used. Next slide. Okay, now I'm just going around the north side of the house. I believe that's the bin in question. You can see it's sort of up against the fence that likely marks the property line to the neighbor. You can see its position and its, you know, height and position to the north side of the house. Next slide, I think that might be it. Oh, yeah, just another, another look at the bin and then just the view to the neighbor to the north. That sideline, across that side yard line. Is that it? Tyler? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the agent or the applicant?
Whoever wants to speak, yeah.
I'm Susan Karasik. Philip Karasik.
Okay, do you both swear, raise your right hands? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go, go for it.
So we purchased our house in 1992. It might show in the record 2021, and that's because for estate purposes, we put it in my name, but we have been there for 33 years, 33 very happy years in that house. We, with our expanding family, we did want to expand the house, but we can't because it's, it is on such a small lot. So the additional deck space as well as the path is really wonderful, especially with the grandchild and all the accessories and the stroller and whatnot. There might be a photo of that. So, and this is our first time that we've come before the board in 33 years, so. And, oh, oh, and also, yeah, so it's in really disrepair. There's the stroller. So I do want to also mention that our neighbors on either side know exactly what's happening. They're perfectly fine with it. We've spoken with them as well as a budding property in the rear. He stopped by, Stuart, and they're fine with it. So we're asking if we can keep the extra deck space. Provide us with a lot of extra living space.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a, just a couple. Number one, because you says you're going to reconstruct the deck. So are you planning on raising it at all or is it going to stay at ground, basically at ground level? So it's really going to be replaced in kind is your, that's my first question. Then I'll have a question on the bin, on the bin for you.
Pat, if you can announce who you are.
I'm David.
Pat, do you swear firm, you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Susan, they'll have a house over there. They have an existing deck that's pre-existent. They want to replace it. I said, let's go, we looked at it, it's the old survey from 1971, 77 was the last one she had. Probably 30 years ago, five people added on. Being a big tip, and I said, I would recommend you go for building permit. And so we're here, we're going to leave the exact same size, same footprint and everything. We were told that we're going to lose the walkway to the main entrance to the house, I guess it went gravel. Right now, the wood walkway there is pre-existent. This deck here, this is all pre-existing. We're just trying to rebuild it there. Same shape, same form.
Okay. That was there when the house was purchased.
The, the.
No, it was expanded.
Deck is, is pre-existing. The, the walkway of the, about 10 feet of the walkway that you saw, we put that, we put that in years ago when we, when we just started to have more and more kids and people there. So we put that, we put that down. And the, the bin in the back is something that I put up. We had somebody come and put it up and we positioned it. That, the neighbor's house is like the unused side of their house. So we basically put it right where there was already a shed as well.
On the neighbor's property?
And both, both our neighbors, you know, we've spoken to them and they have no objection whatsoever to what we were going to do.
Just curious, how long has that shed been there?
Um, I'd say about six years, seven years.
Another spot on the property could be moved conveniently?
The, the property is, it's, it's very small. I looked about, I looked around on the property and I don't see any place where it could be moved where we wouldn't still, we'd still need an extra couple of feet of setback. And if we have, if we have to give, if we have to give it up, I understand that's something that we would do if we had to do it. There is, I can only tell you that it's, it's used to store wood. It is not in any way impacting the, the wetland or the environment. There are no chemicals in there of any sort. There's just straight up wood and some chairs and that's it. Firewood.
I think, go ahead.
Well, I just want to make sure I heard correctly because you said the neighbor's shed, the shed that shows on the survey, that's the neighbor's shed and that's why you put the bin right there to line up with their shed?
Yeah. Lined it up. It's lined up. Yes.
And then also on the decking, so I'm looking at the town technical analysis memo and it mentions that I think originally there was 450 square feet of decking and now it's more. So if I understood you correctly, is it the rear decking that's been expanded over time or I, or are you saying it's that, the sort of deck walkway that was added that is?
It's the rear decking that was expanded.
It was, okay.
And it was, as I said before, the side decking that leads into the front door that was put down by us.
Okay, thank you.
They said the front is 80 feet from wetlands, 100 feet is the issue with it.
Sorry, no, you are, you're out of wetland jurisdiction, aren't you?
The wetland, in more honesty, if you know the area, the wetland is on Central and Devon, on the southeast side. It's way far away from us. There are at least two other houses closer to Central that are right across from the.
Any other questions? No, I'm good. Thank you.
Right.
We have to hear from the Planning Department now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Good night.
You can stay if you, we're, we're not done yet.
Okay.
We have to.
Good evening. Tyler Borzak for the Planning Department again. So this property is located on the east side of Dune, Devon Road in Amagansett. The application is to reconstruct and legalize an existing deck in place. Decking existed on the parcel at the time of the last CO, which I can bring up if you'd like to see it, but it has been expanded slightly since that time. The application also is requesting to keep a bin along the northern property line, which requires significant variances. Wetlands exist across the street, which are within jurisdiction of the majority of the project, but the impacts from, from the project on those wetlands is minimal. There's not a significant amount of improvements and being across the street, the impacts are minimal at best. The most recent CO was issued in 1992 and included approximately 450 square feet of decking and it was located 15 feet from the rear property line, which is what's the required setback. The current decking is approximately 800 square feet. It's located 10.1 feet from the rear property line and some additional decking was, was added as like a walkway along the south side of, of the house, the southwest side. the southwest side, we'll, we'll say of the house. Um, no permits were granted for the extension of the decking, um, from best I can tell from town aerial images, uh, the, the decking, uh, rear decking was extended sometime between 2007 and 2010. Um, the south side, it was hard to tell, um, uh, because it's, it's covered with, with trees and, and, and it's, it was just difficult to tell when that, when that actually happened. So also the proposal to, uh, legalize the existing bin. Uh, this has a setback, setback of 0.5 feet, uh, the bin, uh, along the northern property line, and is about five feet outside of the pyramid regulations. Uh, the bin is somewhat unique in that there's a large shed structure located directly north on the, the neighboring property, um, which could lessen the impact the bin, that, that this bin has on that neighboring property. Uh, but the, you know, the variance standards still need to be met and the applicants need to show how they meet them. Um, they also need to show how they meet the NRSB standards, um, although the small bin, uh, has minimal impacts on wetlands across the street, uh, and the extended decking is similarly minimal, um, and even at the rear of the properties outside of jurisdiction entirely. Um, that's all that I have. I can answer any questions you might have.
Do you think there's an alternate location available for that bin?
Um, they, it's certainly, I mean, alternate locations that would even have better setbacks. Certainly there are.
Right. Even just reduce the variance.
Where, where would that be? They have reduced setbacks from the 410 rule at 60 feet in width. I think they get 9.6 foot setbacks. I'd have to do the map. Um, so they do get somewhat of a reduced setbacks, um, from structures, uh, from the, from the side yard lot lines, not significant, but something. Um, but certainly there are, there are more conforming locations, if not entirely conforming locations.
I just want,
Be next to the shower.
Just to check myself following up on this question, right? So when we grant a variance, it runs with the land, right? But if, if, if that variance were to be granted, it would be specifically for a shed of that size, but wouldn't, it wouldn't carry over to any other structure if the property ever got redeveloped or whatever, right?
If it was ever expanded, that expansion would need a variance.
Right. So it, it runs with the land, but only for this particular.
That exact structure at those dimensions.
Okay. Thank you.
We're basically saying that the deck was extended about five feet. You said it was 15 feet.
Right.
At the time of the last, uh, CO.
Yeah. Roughly five feet. It got extended back towards. It meets the accessories, rear accessory setback. It doesn't meet the principal setback and being attached to the residence, it needs to meet the principal setback.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, I'm just confusing myself. We were just talking about a shed in, that needed a 10-foot rear lot line setback.
Yeah.
In a B residence zone. So why, what am I missing here? But this needs a 15-foot rear yard setback.
The shed, the, the,
No, the deck.
The 15 feet because it's attached to the house. So it gets principal setbacks.
Oh, right, right, right. I'm sorry. Exactly. I knew I was missing something.
Then it would be, then it would be 10. Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Tyler. Is there anybody in the public would like to address this application? Matt, is there anybody online?
We have no callers online.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes, thank you. Um, in the matter of Susan Karasik, I hope I said that correctly, at 67 Devon, uh, Devon Road, Beach Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-174-06-11, I make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record.
Patrick, you can now leave.
You all can leave if you want.
What's that?
Here and a half.
We will. We have, we legally, we have 62 days. Um, it'll be made before then, though.
Sure. But, 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 but,[926.94] So are you comfortable discussing?
I'm definitely comfortable on Boroditsky. I'm saying that Boroditsky because there was a procedural matter. We heard it.
We've heard.
And, you know, have had time to think and deliberate. So yes, I see, I'm perfectly fine to do that. If I may, I'm not, I'm not of the mind to say I'm okay to do an application like we've just heard it and then go in and do it. Because I understand totally about clearing the decks. But, you know, we're running, so it's a decision we could make next week. I just feel that if, if this is a policy that we want to adopt in the board, I think should really have that discussion like we are now as a principle. But I would like to deliberate and think more. And I can't imagine the difference between doing it, let's say, next week versus this week. So I would not want to do that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, Minich wouldn't be on Tep Part tonight anyway, even though that's listed, so we can't do that. The, the issue is Ivan Jacobe. So, I mean, if we're not, we could do this next week. I'm, what's your thought?
Yeah, I remember Mary makes a good point. What's the difference between just rolling it forward a week? Right? You're still going to attack the backlog in the same, same speed.
Right, I don't.
We'll, we'll miss a week.
I don't think it puts a burden on the planning department for us to make a decision a week or whatever from now versus, because they're going to be here, like, we're going to do it at a meeting. And, you know, I, I think I'm, you know, the, the session we had last week, the work session, you know, we cleared the decks on whatnot, eight or nine, eight applications. So, you know, I do think this board is working much quicker than we were. I think our council is getting the, what we call it, the determinations to us more quickly. But if you'll indulge me, I do think there's something to be said for stepping away from a hearing. My process is to go through everything again, re-watch and just not be comfortable taking this.
A lot of that. We're fine with that. Yeah, we're fine with that. All right, so then we're going to go into Sophia.
That was my, I don't know if everyone else did the same way, sorry.
We have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Sophia Boroditsky, 85 Oyster Shores Road in East Hampton. Suffolk Tax Map number 300-92-2-43. The size and location is 146,784 square feet. At 85 Oyster Shores Road, East Hampton. The description is to construct a pool with an associated deck and patio and a deck associated with the principal building within side yard setbacks. There may be sought as the variances of 24.4 feet, 17.6 feet, 15.6 feet and 6.6 feet from 2551110 of the town code are needed to construct the pool. That 25.6 feet pool, 32.4 feet, pool patio, 32.34.2 feet from the side yard property line where 50 feet is required and to construct the deck associated with the building, principal building. 28.4 feet from the side yard property line where 35 is required and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is A3 Residence X, Blood Zone VE8, and the secret class is type two. And this was in mine. So I'll begin. The hearing was held on 7/15/25. There is an existing pool there. It's, it's, I'm going to call it a kidney shape, but it was curved, curved, curved in nature. And what they're doing is reconstructing or, and reconfiguring the pool in the same general location. There is an overall reduction in impervious coverage. The pool will reduce by 153 square feet. The pool and patio will be reduced by 49 square feet. The TAM calls that the proposed sunken patio encroachments to be minor. And that's between that and the principal building. So there is a slight reduction in patio within the 50-foot setback. The proposed deck attached to the principal building will become more conforming to the side yard setback. There is already a wooded area approximately of 70 feet. And it's densely wooded, by the way, separating the neighbor. I, I'm going to approve this application. I think that overall it has a very little impact. It's, it's actually slightly improving the existing conditions, although we are adding a new, a new patio. I think that, I'm just going to go through the variance standards, if you will. Does it benefit to the applicant from grant of the area variance outweigh any detriment? Which grant of the variance will cause the general health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or the town? And I say it does. I think they, it's, it's a reconfiguration. And it's, it's in the general area. And with the wooded area, I think it's, it does, it does outweigh any harm. Does the benefit of the applicant from grant of an area outweigh any detriment? I read that already. Is the area variance to be granted the minimum variance necessary inadequate to alleviate the difficulty causing the applicant to request an area variance? There, I say yes, it is, because there is an existing condition that they're slightly improving. Very slightly, but slightly. Has the applicant shown that the benefit accruing to him from the grant of the requested variance outweighs any harm? Which will be caused to the neighborhood and the town? Yes. Will the grant of a variance cause an underzile change in the character of the neighborhood? Or will it create a detriment to nearby properties? I say no. Again, they're reconfiguring this pool, adding a patio and slightly improving it. The existing condition in the wooded area is very densely wooded. And the TAM supports that. And the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method? You can always argue this to be a yes, but I think, within reason, I think this, this application is within reason. Is the requested variance substantial? In this case, no. I don't find it substantial and they're actually improving it slightly. Now, is it self-created? Yes. Most variances are self-created, but I'll leave it at that. So with that, I will look to approve this application. Terry, you want to go?
Sure. Well, I agree with the chair on this one. There was a discussion, well, not a stake discussion, by the agent, Xiao Lin. As far as alternative locations, that was the one concern. Morgan and, well, the TAM did say that there could be alternate locations. But as was explained by the agent, some of the moving, the pool or the patio would actually be more of an issue in, in the locations where it could be moved. One of part of that being a steep slope. This property is very large and right now it's totally screened from neighbors. There is a large lot easement on this property. And the covering at the hearing was Morgan. And she said basically the footprint for the pool is the matter of difference in some inches from 1981, which apparently was before double setbacks were required for pools. So I think it does beat the standards. I agree. I won't reiterate them, but I too am going to approve this application.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the board knows me. I often take, you know, a strict feeling about observing setbacks. But in, in this case, for some reasons, I'll say, that reiterate some of my fellow board members, the chair and member Berger, I am going to approve these variances. Again, it's compelling to me that they're replacing a pool that, yes, when it was built, was probably built at a time it didn't need the double setbacks, but it somehow became non-conforming along the way. And this pool, we heard, it's hard to see on the survey, but, you know, we heard from the planning department that it's basically within the same spot, maybe within inches of it. And yes, it is getting, let's put it this way, the pool and patio is not getting, it's not getting bigger. So it's, it's being scaled back a bit. So, you know, I sort of see this in the context of replacing, you know, being just redoing a pre-existing sort of non-conforming setback pool. And also, you know, having been on the property, there is, you know, a lot of wooded area. This, if I remember correctly, this lot, the elevation of this lot is much higher than the neighbor that would be affected. And so it's not like they're, you know, cheek to jowl. And all in, I don't think it has a negative impact on the neighbor. Obviously, we didn't get any negative feedback from the neighbors. And so all in, I think it meets the standards and I'm approving the application.
Thank you.
Ed?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to repeat what's been said. I agree with, essentially with everything that's been done. Two, two factors have already been mentioned, but one is that when we discussed moving the pool, representative mentioned that it would become more of a potential, a visual impact on a neighbor by climbing the hill. And so you could, could take it back. We, we could move it a little bit, but what, what are we going to achieve? And as Member Mearing has said, and everyone says, the chair said, this is basically a pool going in the same area. And the other thing is that I think it's important to remember that it was built before double setbacks were in place. And so therefore it was never put incorrectly. And initially, it just inherited this new ruling. And that there have been CFOs along the way that have happened for other work and it didn't kick back then. So I, I, for all the reasons I've been mentioning, and the standards were written by the chair, I'm going to approve this application.
Thank you. Council, I, I don't know if we need it though, but John was not part, he was present, not part of it. Does he participate if Denise is here in the vote?
He feels like he, you know, he was, he was here for the public hearing.
Yeah, he was here.
Yeah, he was here and he is, he's prepared, he is prepared, he said, too.
Yeah.
To do it, so go ahead.
When we, when the alternate thing started, the, it was stated by the town council that what they ultimately approved was that whoever heard the hearing would follow it through to the conclusion. So that would mean Denise for tonight, she was at the hearing.
Yeah, I, I'm.
Just following that, the guidelines that they have.
I'm going to say that.
Rather, I mean, we could, this is still be an approval even with.
Yeah, it's going to be an approval.
But I thought, I, I'm not going to get into discussion of what happened with the town. Just decided to create an alternate. Thought the point was exactly this moment, that if we had a two-two, we were going to have, not be facing that over and over again. That, that the alternate had to be ready to step in. One of us breaks a lag, they step in and make a decision. So we don't get into these two-two ties.
Right. But, but we could also lay over the decision. Again, I know we're trying to clear the decks, but technically, because we just closed the record, right? So tonight. So I guess if, if we wanted to believe that the town board's intention was the member, whether it's the alternate or the full-time member who hears it, right, makes the decision and wants to stick to that, we would legally be able to do it.
I'm not sure.
What's the difference though with a member being absent from a hearing and then voting on it at a later time? When, you know, when they review the hearing online?
We used to do that.
Yeah, we do it all the time.
We used to do that, but that changed. And we have a four, we have a four knocking approval already.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If he wasn't here, then I would have an issue with it, but.
The only disadvantage, I wasn't able to ask questions interactively. But so, but that's true for a member who's absent from a hearing as well.
Yeah, yeah. And it's the same difference if you were actually here and watching it in person.
Well, I mean, one thing procedurally we might want to do when a member knows that they're going to be out and they've heard the hearing, we could always ask that member, like, you know, are you comfortable with the?
I, I would respect that too, as well as, in, in the, in the area where it's an important, like, maybe a complex hearing or something like that. Or there, there, there would be a thing. I, I'm okay with John just, it's good practice. So I don't think it's out of line. So, so John, why don't you go ahead?
Well, I happen to agree with all board members.
There you go.
And I have really nothing to add. I see it as a net, as a net positive for the neighborhood and the town. And the pool might be slightly more visible, but there's no one there to see it. It's very well screened. So I approve the application.
Thank you.
Make him go first next time.
The draft minutes of August 5th?
Yes, I'd like to make a, get corrected. I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft minutes for the East Hampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, August 5th, 2020, yeah, 2025.
Second it?
Concur.
Concur. Next we have, did you concur?
Yes, I concur.
We have resolutions, France here, Yakubowski at 15 Phase Street in Montauk Suffolk Tax Map number 300-28-5-5.22.
Are we rereading this because of a Scrivener's error?
Yeah, it was, that was my mistake. There was something, I made one change, but it was not the correct change to make. So I apologize. But yeah, it's just a, it was just who did the construction protocol. It's just the name of the contractor, or it was the engineer, not the contractor. So it was a confusion there.
This is an application for a new house on a sensitive lot. We'll remember that there's standing water on the lot. There's a lot of discussion about how much impact it might have. Driveway, the house was put in the northwest corner to get the minimum impact on the wetlands. It was approved. I would like then, in the case of Francis Yabowski, 15 Phase Street, Montauk Suffolk County Tax Map 300-28-5-5.22, to approve the determination as corrected.
Second.
Concur.
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 Thank you. We have next Alexander Marie Noble and Rose Malandredos at 48 Treasure Island Drive, Amagansett, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-175-5-20.
Okay, this is in Amagansett. So you will recall that this was an application to legalize a already-built gravel patio area that had, was basically right at rear and side yard setbacks. And also there was, you know, discussion about some revegetation. This was approved in a, I think a three-two vote. And that's, I think, all I need to say right now. So in the matter of Alexandra Marie Noble and Rose Malandredos, 48 Treasure Island Drive, Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-175-5-20, I make a motion to adopt the resolution as written.
Second.
Concur, concur, concur. Thank you, everybody. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Who wants to give that motion?
Somebody with a clock.
Oh, here, sorry. Got the time for you.
Yeah, go for it, Jane.
Want me to? Woo-hoo! Like stepping up in the world. Mr. Chair and board members, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the August 12th zoning board of appeals meeting at 8:02 PM. Second.
Concur, concur, concur. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.